I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we got everybody on board tonight, so we definitely have a quorum that makes for a good meeting, right? Okay, um, regular agenda, you guys have got that in front of you, we made one adjustment to that, added in.
Yep, it'd be the addition of a sheriff's update.
Right after seven.
Yep.
So we're gonna get you guys on the official sheet here, but we'll make amends here. I know, we can do that, we can do that.
That's the only thing.
Anybody, okay, anybody got anything else they wanna add or change?
Motion approved with the setting adjustment.
Okay, Brian makes the motion, he has a second?
Second.
Okay, John does a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion approved, let's go on to number four here. So we got the consent agenda, guys, vendor invoices, um, a couple of aggressive estimates, no change orders, John, are okay? Just keeping them on the, you know, keeping them on the.
Next month, there will, next month, there will be a change order, John, so make sure you put that on your calendar.
Just have fun, yeah, at what it is expense here. Um, anybody got any questions, though, on the consent agenda?
Um, I can't verify, but can you verify that Excel is eighty thousand one ninety-eight?
You got it.
Which one?
Excel mechanical, progressive estimate number three.
See it up there?
I see it.
Oh, is it a separate item?
That's a separate item.
We got that somewhere else.
On the agenda somewhere?
I did not include that Jim, who's in Spain.
Oh, well, let's just add it.
Three or four.
What's that?
They're not in the, uh.
Oh, they're listed as approved consent.
Wire replacement.
Yep, and then the same thing for the crossing.
Are they not in the list, Vance? I can tell you what they are.
Can you just run through it, John, certainly, just really quick, let me know what it is.
So, uh, progressive estimate number four is in the amount of eight thousand two hundred and sixty dollars, this is for the remaining work, uh, not the remaining work, but this is for work to date on the pedestrian crossing. Project is complete, we just hope we are withholding two thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ten cents upon a final completion, Brett and I are gonna go through that. Um, so that one, like I said, is an estimate number four for the amount of eight thousand two hundred and sixty dollars, nothing out of the ordinary there. And the other one is progressive estimate number three for eighty thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars for Excel mechanical and the water meter replacement project. Right now, they're down to less than ten meters to replace. They still have to supply some, but they're down to less than ten, we went through it this morning and got the list all caught up, so that is great, they're about a month ahead, they figured that by the end of the year, they'd get it all in. So they're hoping by the end of the week, they'll have it down to less than, around that five number if, you know, there are some people that are kinda holding out and their scheduling around the holidays gets a little bit weird, but they're trying to make it work with whatever they can. The, uh, ally meters, they've got about, uh, half of them in, and the other half, they're trying to get, otherwise, it'll be into January, when the remainder of those come for the trailer, trailer hoses.
So does that mean, I don't know if we wanna go through this now or go through this later?
Um, doesn't matter to me.
Um, well, I was just gonna ask, so can we begin the electronic read, starting in December?
I told them this morning to get DSG and census online to come out and train Adam on a run thing and how to get the data and dump the data.
That's the goal, is to try and start the meter read in December?
I would say that is, you get your training done in the first part, provided they can do it.
We're down to ten.
What we've asked is the residents to still read their meters for the next couple of months, and then we'll send a notice saying, hey, we got it all working, and then they can stop reading their meter. But we'll have some overlap where we do electronic read and self-read, that way.
Begin the process of reading and making it confirmed with what we're expecting, right? Because people are reporting, then we should be confirming that they're, beginning is actually what we're seeing.
Yeah, I was very happy to hear they're down to less than ten, considering they started with over four hundred and so, and, and, um, getting into some places more than once on some occasions was, was a little tricky, so very good news.
Okay, so, other than that, is there anything else that we need to point out?
Any other questions on this?
No.
Okay, we'll accept the motion to.
Do we need to add the progressive estimate to, so do we need to, we don't need to make an adjustment to this?
No. And they are, they are on the sharepoint, so.
Okay, that's part of the consent agenda.
Yep, you don't need to add them, they're on the consent agenda, uh, so you're fine.
Okay.
Okay, so entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, Dave, I'll take, take Dave, you got a second?
Second.
Okay, yeah, pretty much.
Chelsea.
Chelsea gave. Chelsea did the second. We're good. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Okay, minutes from November fifth. I didn't double check, I don't think there's, I didn't put any notes on there, so I didn't see anything, I don't know, anybody else got any questions on the November fifth meetings?
No.
No, except the motion to accept the meat, minutes is written?
Motion approved.
Okay, Brian does the motion, he has a second?
Second.
Yep, Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. In the special meeting here that we did on the thirteenth, we were meeting with Matt Lauer in Compton.
It's gonna be tough.
I know, it's fun, though, I enjoyed that.
That connection that that's.
It's not spelled.
Not to say.
Power, not lower.
No, not power, let's.
Well, it's good to see him back.
Well, remember his name.
It's good to see Matt back to work, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it is. All right. So. I'll make the motion to approve the, uh, special meeting minutes. All right, John makes the motion to get a second?
Second.
All right, Dave does a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, so now we have time for public comment, anybody got anything you wanna bring up, chit chat about? Going once, going twice, all right, we'll move along to the sheriff's department. Jesse, I'll let you have the mic.
Again, thanks for allowing us to come this evening and changing up the agenda a little bit to accommodate our schedule, I appreciate that.
Yep.
I just wanted to, I was actually working out with Brian, we were working out at the gym together, and, um, he, not that that's funny, or I don't, I'm not laughing, I'm not laughing at him.
We are terrified, we're terrified.
And he said that you guys might be discussing the, uh, the sheriff's contract this evening, so I mentioned to him that I could certainly come out and see if you guys had any questions for us, um, on the contract, if you were gonna be discussing it tonight, um, if you had any concerns with it. We wanna make sure that, uh, we're providing a good service to you and that we're, we're, uh, transparent, we're educational on anything that we're doing and, and why we're doing it the way that we're doing it, so, um, let's certainly entertain any questions, anything in reference to the contract or anything with our agency, um, anything like that.
I guess I don't, we have the contract in front of us, guys, I don't know if we've seen it.
I don't think I've got it.
What, anyway?
Oh, you don't have it yet?
Vance does have a copy of it, so we'll be passing it around here.
Okay.
Okay, that's, um, no, I.
Yeah, it's, yup, well, I could tell you, so last year, the, it was at one sixty-one, five ninety-six, and it's pretty much the same this year, is what it shows me.
The cost to the city is not increasing?
No.
For this contract here?
No, not from what I show, so, um, and of course, I don't know if anyone has questions on what that cost covers, or, I think you guys probably.
Unless it changed from last year, I think we got that started.
Usually, you know, it does go up usually a little bit, and that's usually for our COLA or our cost of living increase, just to cover those costs, but it's usually not.
But the equipment costs and so forth, the, the, I don't know if there's been any additional equipment that the deputies have had to carry with them when they've been on duty, that that hasn't changed, or the county's been absorbing that cost of that equipment?
Yup, we've been absorbing that, that cost, so, and, uh, usually, if we do have any equipment costs, it's because we gotta switch vehicles or something and then cages, but normally, the, uh, county will absorb that cost, so.
Well, the first thing I was gonna ask about with the body cams, I'm assuming that's standard equipment now, or is that?
We, we do not have body cams right now, uh, the little box that you see on their vest right there is actually just a voice recorder, and that's hooked up to their camera in the car, we still have in, in-car cameras. Uh, we haven't made the switch to body cams yet, uh, for a couple reasons, number one is, is the storage is really expensive, and someone has to maintain that, the storage of that being evidence and for a lengthy period of time and that type of thing. So we haven't really figured out a really good solution to that yet, or, uh, figured anything like that into the budget, and then, uh, the, the thing with the new body cams is they almost make them better than what the human eye sees, so we're trying to research a product that would be similar to that of the human eye, so that everyone is judged equally, fairly, that type of thing. Because some of the body cameras can actually see at night, and, you know, our guys can't really always see in those types of areas, so. So, now, we, we continue to research that, and I see us potentially going to those in the future, but right now, we're, we don't have those, we just have the voice recorder and, uh, and our camera systems in our cars, so. But as far as any, any other equipment, we haven't really picked up anything else, other than we've gone to those vest covers that you see, their vest is a little bit different, that brown, and the reason that we went to those was for, uh, officers or deputies having back issues. Uh, this takes the weight off of their belt, and when they're sitting in the car, they're not sitting sideways from everything on their belt, they can get some of it off their belt and up onto the vest, so, pretty much, law enforcement across the nation is going to that, just, uh, because we're certainly get a lot of deputies with back issues and things, so that's why we've switched to those, so that's why they look, uh, look a little bit different, but. Um, this, this right here, back here, is Ross Krause, and, uh, you guys all know Jesse Castle, of course, because he's been out here for a couple of years, uh, Jesse Castle will be rotating out in January.
That's gonna be my question, do we keep you or keep the same?
Yup, and, uh, you're gonna give Ross an air, and Ross does a, obviously, Jesse does a very nice job for us, I'm sure you guys are, you're a little bit disappointed that he's leaving.
Yup. Nothing against you, Ross.
There's, there's, yup, there's a few reasons, uh, why, why, number one, we try to rotate officers every couple of years, but even on top of that, uh, Jesse's got a few different assignments at the office now that he's picked up, in addition to his regular duties, he's on SWAT team, and he also does, um, criminal interdiction, so. Some of those things might have started to pull him away from him actually being down here, because he's on call for some of those things. Uh, Ross does a really nice job for us, he's really, uh, community oriented, so he's gonna be the type of person that's gonna be getting out and visiting with your businesses a lot, your residents, and forming those relationships with them, which is obviously really important to the work that we do, and sharing information and criminal information, so, uh, he'll, he'll do a nice job, and I think you guys will be really happy with him as well. Lindsay will still be here, of course, because we try to offset those years, so you don't lose two at one time, that type of thing, so.
How long you been with the department, Ross?
Uh, just about three and a half years, two years on the road here in December.
Where you been assigned so far?
Uh, pretty much everywhere in the county, um, through our adopt a community program, where we kinda focus, not through contract community, but through, um, just our deputies focusing on certain community, I've been in Allison Leonard, uh, the last two years, we go to learn meetings, uh, working with them, so, looking forward to being out here, and I'm glad Captain John didn't throw me too high up there, because I'm, I'm okay in my job.
He, he could be thrown up there, he, he does a good job, so.
Well, I'm looking forward to being out here, for the fun.
And, um, so, yeah, he'll, he'll take over in, in January, have a little bit of a transition period with Jesse, so he can kinda get to know things down here and, um, meet some of the business owners and do some of those things before he just rotates out, so.
Well, being a business owner in town, I don't know if everybody's aware, these guys stop by, middle of the night, they'll check doors, check your property, I've picked them up on video before, and it's just fantastic what they do.
Yeah, that's one thing that we, uh, that we concentrate on at night, because, um, you know, during the day, they can make contact with people that are out and about, but at night, you know, people are obviously sleeping for the most part, so, that's one thing that we like them to do, is get out and do door checks and.
Just one of those things that goes unnoticed, you know, people don't realize how much they do do for our community, so.
Um, in addition to that, I think Jesse, you gave them, uh, you guys have had the code red letter, and that's been sent out to your residents, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, and so we wanna make sure that everyone's on board with that, and they understand that, and then, uh, I had mentioned to Brian and, um, Vance, and I think, I don't, I think you were in there, Brent, and I stopped by one day, and, uh, one thing that I would like to do for the businesses down here is do a active shooter training for the businesses. Uh, I've done that out in Castleton, I've done it in Kindred, and I'm gonna do it up in Arthur, uh, shortly here, but we'd like to do it down here in your businesses as well, and what that does is it gives, uh, the business owners, um, some ideas if they did have an active threat or active shooter coming in business, how to address that, at least until law enforcement can get there and take care of the threat. A lot of people have kind of a misunderstanding that a lot of active shooter, active threat situations happen in the school environment, and actually, a majority of them happen in businesses, they just don't get reported as often as they do in the schools, because there's children involved, uh, but we wanna make sure that our businesses are at a high level of readiness to respond to those types of threats as well, so, um, we'll work through Jesse and Ross to get that scheduled, and certainly invite all, everyone on the city council to come through that as well, because not only can you use it in your business, but if you're out with your family at West Acres, it's gonna give you some ideas on how you could respond to that type of threat, and, uh, you may become a leader in that type of situation, because you have the training, because a lot of people don't get that training. So, uh, we'll bring that to you, and, uh, it's been really successful, a lot of people have been asking for that training in Fargo, a lot of businesses, but, um, it was myself and one other person that teach out, and I, I prefer to get it done out in the county first, before I start actively doing it in Fargo, unless far, because I'm gonna get real busy with it, so.
Okay, that was gonna be my one question, I was gonna ask you, but if we could maybe get in on that, so that's good.
Yup, yup.
I think that's good to have that knowledge.
Yup, and that's why, you know, with our contracts, that helps branch it out to you guys and get you that stuff, so we'll, we'll do that.
The, the other question I've got for you two is, I know I had talked to Paul about this, six, seven, eight months ago, but, um, you know, currently, we're running two deputies, I don't know when we have to think about shifting yours to two and a half or three, I don't know if you can help recommend or let us know, because I'm not, I'm, off the top of my head, I don't know when we need to step it up again.
Sure, you know, really, as a council, you guys will have to make that, but, decision, but I told, uh, Jesse just to send me some statistics, so you, we could look at some things, and do they have this, the year-end thing, or the thing that you sent me, or not? Not really, okay, but we'll have him email this to you, it kinda gives you an idea of your calls from two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen, whether they're going up or down, that type of thing. Uh, one thing that I will tell you is, um, when I come in, in, on January, um, as a sheriff, there's a few things that we're gonna concentrate on, all in the communities, that, uh, be a little bit different, uh, it's gonna be more investigative stuff and drug stuff, that's my background, um, is narcotics investigations and investigations, uh, property crimes, personal crimes, and, uh, through Ross working down here and building relationships with your community, some of that information will start getting passed to our office, you know, who's doing what down here and those types of things. And as we get that information, we're gonna develop that a little bit more, I'll be assisting them with that, and, uh, so, calls for service might change a little bit, so it'll be a little bit more generated stuff that we do. Um, but certainly, uh, narcotics stuff, we wanna try to keep that over the community.
Right.
So that's one thing that we'll be concentrating on and working and developing a little bit more.
Yeah.
So, um, it'll take us a few months to start digging into some stuff, but.
That's fine, like I said, I just wanted to.
But you can, uh, we can send you this, and, you know, we're, we're certainly open to, um, always working with you to add more people, if that's something you're interested in, of course, I don't have the final say in that, that has to, I present that to the commission, and they have to approve it because of budget reasons, but I already talked to Chad Peterson, who's our, our portfolio holder for the law enforcement piece with the commission, and he is totally on board with trying to get more people out in the communities and stuff, so, like, I don't see a problem if you guys wanted to do that.
There's kind of a date for that, isn't there, that you need to have notice for?
Yeah, it would've been earlier. I mean, you guys, you guys put your budget together.
We, our budget's already been submitted for next year, but we can, we can, uh, you know, like, when the street crimes group got started, that came out of budget cycle, and sometimes, we could go back and ask for that additional stuff, and they'll prove it out of budget cycle, it just kinda depends on how much money it is, so.
Because that really boils down to, you know, call volume and response time, right? It's like, how many of these investigations are you chasing down, and, you know, what's the overall response time, because if, if you're seeing that the, the response time is increasing because the guys are so busy with other things, or, or that just the overall call volume and follow-up is requiring more effort, you know, that, those, if there's benchmarks that you could use to say, okay, we're, we're reaching that point where the guys are overloaded, right? There's too much going on, you know, to give us that recommendation.
Sure, so, and this thing that he sent me here that I have on my phone.
Okay.
We don't, we don't really record our response time on there, however, we can figure that out, or if that's something you guys are interested in, we'd have to.
But I mean, you, you guys, you guys track that, right, you guys track.
We do it through dispatch, but it's not at like a regular staff, so we can, but we can certainly pull it up.
But I mean, it's really your judgment call, right, to, to say, because that's one of the rationale behind going to two, was to reduce that overall response time, because there were, you know, situations where it was gonna be, depending on where you guys were at, you could be in Kindred or Long Mays in Castleton, and it was gonna take you twenty minutes to get here, right, if a call did happen. And that's what we're trying to say, okay, overall, when calls have happened, you've been able to respond within, you know, five, ten minutes.
Yup.
And that, that's the, the key element, right, if that cook, response time is gonna be over a certain threshold, then it becomes a safety issue, right?
Exactly.
And it's all boils down to the number of, and severity of types of call we're getting, right, in the town as well.
Sure, and so, um, yeah, I mean, you guys, if you guys wanna look at this, and then certainly, we can chat about it, and, you know, what, one thing I did notice on here is that your calls for service went down a little bit, but that can also be attributed to, because people see us more, I don't know, you know, that's, that's kinda a little bit hard to measure, and of course, we'd have to look at everything else, but, um, the amount of hours and stuff that you have on yours is, uh, pretty constant.
Through October also, so you had about like your months towards the previous two years around there as well, and those are for the entire year, so.
Great, yeah, I see that too, so.
I'd say after the first of the year, let's evaluate this a little bit and.
Yup, sure.
The other part of it too is gonna be now that you're taking a little bit different approach, right, narcotics investigation, so forth, those sometimes take more work, right, to follow up, and.
Yup.
So that, that's gonna be another factor that plays into this, do we have a big enough problem to follow up?
So, we'll, we'll use, uh, obviously, whoever we have stationed down here will be down here, but I'll, I'll be pulling additional resources from the agency to work some of that stuff, that you, that's just, because it'll be, it's gonna be county-wide, yeah.
Okay, so it's a county-wide. Okay.
And, um, so, you know, we got some access to some different resources that we're necessarily using right now, uh, like street crimes, people in different, different things that we can potentially use, so, um, yeah, and then, just in general, I mean, for me, the biggest thing is communication, so if people are approaching you, communication and education, so if people are approaching you, and, you know, they're concerned with something we're doing, uh, one thing that I don't like to happen is things to fester, so to speak, people talk about it and not, not exactly know why we're doing something we're doing. I like to hit those problems head-on, because a lot of times, if we just do education and let people know why we do something we do, they're usually pretty good with it, or they understand it, um, so make sure that if people have problems, they're coming to you guys with something that we're doing, um, I always will have an open door, give me a call, I'll come down, I'll talk to the person, whatever, and we'll get it figured out, because we wanna make sure that we have a good relationship with your, with your community and, and what we're doing, and so people understand it, so.
I agree totally, and we'll, we'll do that too, if we start hearing something, we'll try and nip it in the bud.
It just makes it easier for everyone, and a lot of times, people just don't understand something sometimes, so.
So the one, no, I was just gonna say, one of the challenges, I know we're gonna be dealing with next year, and you guys probably know this too, school's gonna be coming down here and building next, so we're gonna have a lot of trailers and things like that, about seventy-six and seventeen, along with some of the other locations that are gonna be building up too, so, there's gonna be a lot more opportunity, unfortunately, for theft in the town here, so, I don't know, you guys are aware of it, but it's just something that I know next year will, that'll be kind of something we're gonna try and be more cognizant of then too, with all the development going on down here.
Yeah, we do actually have some thefts going on right now, so, we had some, some, uh, storage units, and this is where that education thing comes in kinda, so we had some storage units broken into in Mapleton, and we had a patrol meeting shortly thereafter, and I told our guys, hey, if you see cars out driving around, and they don't seem like they fit the area, or it's late at night, and you're just kinda wondering, now, this is strange, what are they doing out here? I want you to, you know, let's try to grab a plate, maybe get a traffic stop, so we can identify these people, see if we can link it back, well, the same person got followed two nights in a row, uh, by Hunter and by our guys, right? And so we called in a complaint and, uh, said, hey, you know, you guys following me around every night, I don't know any particular reason why they're doing that, and I said, well, actually, that's my fault, I told them, you know, we're trying to figure out who's breaking into these places, and we're trying to identify people out at one, two in the morning, and so, yeah, I told them to do that, so we can figure out who's out the door, obviously, you're, you know, it's legit, you live up here, that type of thing, but at least we know now who you are, and we can rule you on it, so. So that, that's where that education thing comes in, right, have no problems talking to people, and just letting them know what we're doing and why we're doing it, and that type of thing, so.
You brought a code, code, the code red, what do, what do we do as a state for new people moving into town?
It's on the website, I think, but we haven't sent out a letter, we haven't sent out something in horse happenings for, what, about a year, I think we did last fall.
We just, we just said that's news.
Okay, I haven't gotten it yet, so, all right.
We just said in horse happenings, it took, we've come up about annually, uh, within like a news letter, that's my understanding.
Maybe that's something we should do separate as a mailer or something, to, you know, when we start billing them, you know, we have addresses and stuff.
Like, somebody, if we know that there's a new resident, if there's a newsletter that has information, you know, aparting.
Yeah, maybe we can, yeah, maybe we can put together a new resident newsletter that has kinda pieces like that, and we send them their new bill for water into a separate, we could say, just send the letter, welcome to Boris, and here's some information.
It's a really good idea, and we have a new letter drafted, because we've been working this and that out to the whole county, through the different cities, I think you guys were one of the first ones that we sent it out to, we've kinda done some adjustments since then, so, um, you know, Ross and Jesse both have access to that, if you wanna upgrade that or whatever, but, um, we weren't happy that it happened, obviously, when we had incidents out the town that you guys weren't involved in, but, but it also, we always try to learn something from things that we do wrong, and we did some things wrong there, and we definitely learned from it, and, and so, for that reason, it was good for us, because we, we definitely learned from it, and.
Well, plus it helps our residents understand that there's this code red, and yeah, it was its own issue that we had with it, but still, some of the people don't know we even had that.
No.
So again, this is just bringing it to the forefront, so that we can help out our residents, know this stuff too, so.
Sure.
So, it was all good.
And I didn't, you guys have anything else, Jesse?
Well, congratulations, man.
Yeah, thanks, yes, thanks for stopping out.
Appreciate it, as you know, we're, we've got a, a fellow employee that's suffering from leukemia, so we're trying to shave ears for November to raise money for him, and I'm gonna sell my beard, it's a little grayer from the last time.
Jesse can grow one?
We, we already were giving him a hard time.
I always have.
I'm the same way, so. Yes, sir.
Uh, the nine-one-one vote did not go through, how do you see how it impacted the city and?
Sheriff town, so, I don't know if you guys know what he's referring to, but, uh, you know, the nine-one-one system and our radio system didn't, didn't pass with the sales tax, and I don't know that it was, um, marketed enough.
It wasn't.
People understood it, and apparently, there's some laws with that, I don't know much we can do with that, I guess, I mean, of course, it came from different people in the sheriff's office, but, um, so, yeah, now, it looks like everyone's property taxes are gonna go a little bit unpaid for, so, that's unfortunate, because you know, people come in this area, you gotta pay for, for the sales tax, and I don't know how much, that this can affect that, I guess.
I thought I read something like it was about twenty dollars per household or something.
I think it's something like that, but, so, this is an upgrade to our radio system, because the system that we have now is outdated, and, uh, really, when we have radios and portals go down, and stuff in our car, we want to be able to borrow parts from, and our parts are slowly starting to do, so we're trying to change over this.
It's that all over, you gotta go.
Motorola.
Okay, never mind, yeah. Motorola's not, they need some of their equipment anymore, right?
You'd be interested to know that, when our guys are on calls, a lot of different areas in the county, our portals are going to work, unfortunately, quite happy to see your castle, so, you know, it'll work, and even like inside schools sometimes, and things like that, just, so, with this new armor system, we'll be able to talk, apparently, from Tower City to people in Minneapolis, as strong as it is, buildings won't be a problem, so, I mean, that'll definitely be a good upgrade, it's just expensive to do, so.
Need it happen, yeah.
Okay, anybody got anything else, otherwise?
Thank you.
Thank you for something, I'll make it.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the audit presentation.
All right. Next up, we have the audit presentation. Who's got, okay.
I would like it, uh, in the next year, um.
You go ahead.
Tracy, I apologize for not putting your name on the agenda, but this is Tracy Bittner. She's a management partner with Widmer Roll, so, um, there you have it.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the promotion.
Tracy, what was the last name again?
It's Bittner, P-U-E-T-H-N-E-R. It's not as exciting as Matt Law, unfortunately.
It's okay though. Anyway, welcome. Come on here.
Thank you. Ready for me to start?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
All right, well, first of all, thank you. Um, as I mentioned, I'm Tracy Bittner. I'm the engagement partner, um, audit partner at Widmer Roll. And with me is somebody that you probably do recognize, and that's Paige Carlson. Uh, she may have been under a different name when you last met her. So, um, I have to give Paige a lot of thanks. She was the in charge of the audit engagement, which I know is the most exciting thing that you have on your agenda tonight. But, um, our team, we, we do have a team, and that includes Tanner Sacrismo, uh, Brian Clark, and Kristin Copzing. So they all worked on the audit, and we appreciate that opportunity to, to work with you. So tonight, I'm just gonna give you sort of a brief overview, unless there's specific questions. Um, you know, we're, we're almost at Thanksgiving, and the audit does cover through twelve thirty-one seventeen. So just sort of a brief overview, and then, uh, questions as you, as you, um, may have. Um, so we'll just do a brief overview, and as this is the first time that we've been asked to come forth to counsel, I am gonna just give you a brief overview of the type of things that we do in an audit. Um, we'll go through the results, and, um, that, then we'll move into some of the findings as a brief overview, and, uh, communication with those charged with governance. So why, why are we here? So an audit is required, um, by the North Dakota statute. Um, so for, uh, a municipality is required to have an audit every two years when their receipts exceed two hundred thousand dollars. So, um, you are, you can have an audit annually, but at least every two years. Um, the audit is submitted to the North Dakota State Auditor's Office. And one of the unique things, some of you I know are business owners or work in the business community, is that an audit done for the city of Horace is also performed under, under government auditing standards, otherwise known as the yellow book. And I, um, I'm, I'm just gonna pause for a second, so I do apologize. It was my fault getting this late to Vance. But the, the, I'm just going through the PowerPoint presentation, and that, I will reference the materials. So, but he does now have a copy for your records of what we have distributed. So for government auditing standards, some of you may have ever recall, that's called the yellow book. And, um, when you have an audit done under the yellow book, that means there's some additional procedures, including writing a report on the consideration of internal control over financial reporting, um, reporting the results of tests with compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, and grants. A yellow book audit also requires a schedule of findings with responses to be presented. And then for our team at Widmer Roll, we're required by the yellow book to have a certain amount of training that qualifies. And also, we have to evaluate our independence, also individually, as well as the firm. And then the other, the other thing I'd like to mention just overall is there's, um, the government-wide financials versus the fund-level financials. And I just would like to remind you that what you see most of the time is at the fund level. So the fund level is by funds, so you have your general fund, your highway users fund. And when you're reporting on the fund level, that means you're looking at everything in either that period or very short term. That, that's what you're used to seeing. However, GASB requires that, um, there is what is referred to as a government-wide presentation. So it's almost converting everything to an accrual basis. So long-term liabilities are recorded, long-term receivables, and if you had your fixed assets, there would be your, your fixed assets would be shown on the government-wide. So when you reviewed your, your financial statements, the first couple of statements at the beginning are the government-wide or converted. That shows your long-term obligations, and then, then it goes into what you're used to seeing on the fund level. So it can get a little convoluted sometimes when you're reading these reports. So, um, just to, you know, an audit is, uh, in the independent assessment of your activity for that particular period of time. And so as I mentioned, we're already independent, but we perform certain procedures. It is not a one-hundred percent verification. If we were, you would have to probably, you know, set aside a, a cubicle or a space for us to be here all year round. But we do do confirmations with independent parties and the state. Uh, we inspect documents and source doc, uh, we, we inspect records and source documents. We perform analytical procedures based on what we expect to see. We read through the minutes, I, I guess, and we can watch them online now too, or your, your, um, meetings. Uh, so we do read through that, we see what's going on, and then we, we look at that and compare that to the results of, is this what we're expecting to see and what is discussed? Um, we reperform certain activities and recalculate numbers. We look at significant estimates. We observe and inquire, some of you, um, that are involved in that inquiry process. Um, we use a, a software called Teammate Data Analytics, where we can download information and perform additional tests or have the system pull out unusual transactions. And again, we, we are always discussing things either Brenton, Vance, or for you during the audit. Any questions so far?
No, thank you.
Okay, so just to give you a brief overview of the auditor's report, and again, this is a little convoluted, especially if you have an audit done for your own business. Um, so I will remind you that the audit was for a two-year period of time, December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, and two thousand sixteen. Management's responsibilities are clearly stated, where management is responsible for the preparation and the fair presentation of the financial statements, as well as for the design, implementation, and maintenance of internal control. So we cannot be a part of the control system. We can only evaluate it and identify issues. Our responsibility is to express an opinion on the financial statements, and have reasonable, and to provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. And we're also responsible for selecting the procedures. Certainly, if anyone ever has a, um, something they'd like to look at, um, or for us to look at, we take those inquiries and, and incorporate that into our audit steps. So the auditors, we have to report on the government-wide financials, which I talked about, are really the ones that are converted more to an accrual basis. And then we have to report on all the funds, um, funds as well. So basically, uh, with the exception of the areas affected by capital assets, um, the opinion is unmodified for the various funds. However, for those funds, uh, funds and activities that would have had capital assets, um, we issue what's referred to as an adverse opinion, just because it's not recorded in accordance with, with GAAP. And so that's gonna affect your government-wide again, your conversion to accrual basis, um, activities, your business type of activities, because of the, uh, the water and sewer fund, and then specifically the water and sewer fund. Everyone's good? Okay. Um, and Paige is gonna just give a very brief overview of the journal entries that were posted.
All right. So the adjusting journal entries are abbreviated, abbreviated to AJEs, which are the fund-level adjustments that we've made. Um, the amounts that are included here are, um, rather high, and that is due to, um, the soft accounting software that is currently being used by the city, not having cash, general ledger accounts for all of the funds. Where we would normally see if a revenue or disbursement was recorded in one of your capital project funds or a debt service fund, it would increase or decrease the cash in that account. Um, so because there's only one cash general ledger account, we had to make adjustments to, or we proposed adjustments to, um, adjust that activity to properly state the revenues and expenses that you would have had in the debt service and capital projects funds. There's also RJEs, which are reclassifying journal entries. So that would be reclassing your loan proceeds for the state revolving funds that you received in two thousand seventeen. Um, the interest portion of debt payments, so in previous years, it's been recorded all as principal. And for a financial statement presentation, we have to break out principal and interest and any other fees like you would have had during the year. Um, and also reclassifying the current portion of debt. So on the government-wide financial statements, you would identify, um, your total loan liability, but then also what you're expected to pay in the next year. Um, we also have GASB journal entries, is what they're abbreviated, or government-wide journal entries. And those record the long-term debt and notes receivable, and are not recorded in the city's accounting software.
What about the other one that you didn't have any adjustments? What's PA?
Uh, past adjusting journal entries. So that would be, we have materiality levels for each of the funds. So if we found a difference that wouldn't materially affect your financial statements, but could have been made as an adjustment, we just provide it in case it is something that you choose to make.
Okay.
So the next couple of slides are just a five-year activity of, of basically what's been happening in some of the funds. And it's really sort of exciting, because, um, these graphs sort of show the results of what's happening here, um, in the city and the growth, and that's happening. So with the general fund activity, uh, we're finding that the activity, you know, is consistent from year to year with revenues and expenditures. And, um, the primary sources of revenues impacting the general fund are gonna be from your taxes, licenses and permits, and intergovernmental revenues. And your expenditures are for the public safety, which, um, you know, you obviously addressed tonight, as well as general government. Um, if you're looking at the slides, the blue represents the, the, uh, the assets of the general fund, which are gonna be primarily the cash and very liquid assets. And, um, if you recall, the general fund had some transfers out to some other funds, so that's why you see.
That's what I was gonna ask, why that decreased? It was just a transfer?
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Uh, the highway fund activity, um, again, this is dependent on the states in terms of, uh, what they allocate to the city of Horace each year. Red are the revenues, um, green are the expenditures, and in this particular case, you can see the steady increase in cash, and that's, um, due to there's been no major projects involving those highway user funds. Debt service, uh, moving on, um, in two thousand seventeen, you're gonna see the impact on the assets due to the, the special assessment revenue bonds that were issued, um, in the amount of five point eight million dollars. So, um, again, you can see the activity has been, from a revenue expenditure standpoint, has been fairly consistent over the last couple of years. Um, but this year, you know, with those revenue bonds, you can see the difference in cash. Capital projects, um, activity, this to me is where you can really see what's going on in terms of what you have to do for infrastructure, um, in the city. So in thirteen and fourteen, there's basically no capital project activity. And you can start to see in two thousand fifteen that, um, you know, loan and bond proceeds started to come in to the city, and then, um, a number of those developments have started, um, construction, both in fifteen and obviously in seventeen.
So, Pat, one question on the assets. What, what is considered an asset in that capital project fund?
You know, that would be the capital.
Okay, so that's.
I don't think there's, I don't think there's.
So that would be, that would be temporary cash that's being held while the debt is being serviced and so forth. Okay. It's a temporary holding.
That would be our bonds, the, the payment we get, and then that is an ending.
And that goes out.
That's gonna go out over time, so you're just stating at the end of two thousand seventeen, we had approximately two million dollars of money that we were going to pay out to, um, activities.
Good, right? Yeah, that makes sense. All right, thank you.
Okay, good. I was wondering.
Well, good, no, it's good to get questions, because then we know what to include in other presentations. So the water and sewer fund, um, if you recall, in seventeen, you had the state revolving loans of, um, what, two point?
Yeah.
Zero million dollars. So the red is liabilities in this situation, so that's why there's a huge increase. Um, the, um, and then the, the green is the revenues, and that looks, you know, for me, sort of flush. And, you know, that's probably one thing you're looking at with, you know, the increased number of, um, residents in New York and fees, you know, assessed there. So, you know, just based on the activity, I would expect to see that amount increase in the future.
So a question on this. So this is for sewer line? Is that the debt related to the sewer line, the cargo?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So why is that under water and sewer when it's a capital project? I guess that's what I'm curious, why we would classify it underwater and sewer fund? Because isn't water and sewer fund our operation of our water and sewer and any of the, I guess, yeah, I'm curious why that's constituted there.
My understanding of the loans were that they were gonna be repaid with the fees that were collected from the meter replacements and the increased fees.
So the meter replacement one, I guess I could see that one. But is this one including our sewer line?
Typically, you would classify, if you're doing a capital improvement under the utilities, then it would fall under expense tied to the utilities. Also, if we did improvements to sewer lines, water lines, meters, all those different areas, it should be reflected in the utility fund as a separate animal. It gets a little confusing with the capital projects, but it's a capital proj, there, there really are two different capital projects. The infrastructure and then the utility infrastructure.
Because to have a dramatic increase in our liabilities in one year like that, somebody would look at that and go, what the heck did we do? But we have to be able to state that a lot of that was taken, is a project, but we're also gonna pay it off with either special assessments or that sales tax revenue and not fees to our, because that's what I would think it is, is it's fees to our residents are gonna pay to pay out that debt. And that's not all of that is gonna be paid that way. That's all I was, I was talking about, okay.
And then with the infrastructure too, um, the plan from my last meeting with Vance is for the two thousand eighteen audit, we're planning to include capital assets. Um, so we'll do procedures for the initial year of implementing that. Um, and then since those three projects are paid, are funded with the state revolving loans, we will include that as a capital asset, which will offset that liability, so.
Okay, good.
So it just doesn't look like.
Yeah, it doesn't look very good in one year here that we have this huge increase without a offset of liability, without something to pay for, okay.
Yeah, one thing to remember about the water and sewer fund, and I think Brenton did a really good job, it is treated almost like a business. So if, if you have the assets, that's where they go, the debt goes, the bad is slow, so.
As long as in time, our sourcing, our, where that, where the revenue for, for paying off that debt's gonna come from is in this graph, then it looks fine to me, I guess.
In the future, we're working to separate.
Sure.
All the utilities, so you'll see truly where that debt is.
Okay.
But it's gonna take years to be able to have that properly reflected.
Okay.
We're moving in the right direction.
Good questions. Any other questions so far before we move on to the communication letters? So as a part of the audit, we are, um, as I mentioned too, it's a yellow book audit, so we are required to, um, issue a schedule of findings and responses. Um, additionally, we issued, um, a communication, some other matters, and then also issued a communication to those charged with governance. And I'm gonna start with the schedule of findings and responses, and that is included in your primary audit package. So we, we have, um, we evaluate findings and first of all, start off with the deficiency. And then we determine, should it be just verbally discussed? Should we put it in writing? And then how should we elevate it to, do we wanna elevate it to a significant deficiency or to a material weakness? And, um, so we have determined, uh, through our, our evaluation, that there's, there's four material weaknesses. The first being the capital asset records or fixed asset records, infrastructure records, um, that, that traditionally has not been recorded. And I know you're in the process of going back to gather all that information to properly record that. Um, in the, some of those assets, um, in the, in the water and sewer fund will then be de. In the, some of those assets in the, in the water and sewer fund will then be depreciated. Those that are in the governmental funds, that will be, it will depend on the type of asset, if it's, you know, depreciated or not. The segregation of duties, the simple fact is you have a small staff. And really, the reason why we bring this to your attention is the, the best thing is to be aware of what's going on, to ask questions, review those invoices that are presented. You know, when you see your internal reports of something looks unusual, ask the question. So in, you know, and so we do look at that entire segregation of duties and then also, you know, recommend if it's possible to cross-train like with my data here and all and stuff, you know, to make sure that somebody else knows how to do everything. We did post several audit adjustments, you know, during the audit and we had to go back and adjust the beginning fund balance. And Paige, can you just speak a little bit more on that? Is that part to the system?
Yeah.
Or the software?
Right, how the accounting software was set up in previous, or back when it was originally set up. And just the functionality between the fund activity not happening necessarily in that fund, it would pull cash from the general fund. So it was just reallocating mostly. And then in prior years, we haven't been able to go back into years and report the proposed audit adjustments. So that wouldn't allow our beginning numbers to match what Vance was able to pull from the conversation. But with discussion with Vance and looking at the board minutes, Black Mountain accounting software has been approved to be purchased and implemented April 1?
Yes, that's, that's our schedule. Yep.
So with that, so some of Vance's material, you know, I'll work to make sure that everything is set up on the get-go and get started on the right foot.
I guess I would make a statement, that's just a setup in our financials. We should be able to create the accounts and we could create planes and make the adjustments now. Correct? Am I thinking wrong, right? I mean, it's a cash account, we can just create additional GL accounts.
We could, if that would simplify some of the transition, would that help?
Think of it that way.
From the transition from the accounts we have today in Great Plains to the account structure that we would be using in Black Mountain, could we make those account changes? I'm assuming now is not the good time, beginning of the year would.
Yeah, I was going to say.
January might be the time and make those changes so that it makes that transition to the new account structure in Black Mountain easier.
Yeah, easier.
So we're having, maybe getting a jumpstart on some of the, there's a resolution of some of the issues.
Yeah.
Is that even possible? I guess I'm asking a question.
I'm not sure as far as bringing you on a certain.
Well, in the past, I've been, once a year is closed in GP, I've never been able to go back and make adjustments. I don't know how to do that and Summit has never provided me with the correct information on how to go about that.
I don't think you can.
I think you can, I think.
I'm saying for the 2019 going forward, can we make structure changes where needed for Black Mountain? So not going back. So can we adjust the starting balances in the account structure to do the allocation the way you're suggesting?
That can be done.
Starting January 1?
Right.
Not going back.
Right. And what the auditors have done before is they adjust the original trial balance, offsetting those entries that are, that I was unable to make.
Yeah, you're opening, you're opening balances for the.
Exactly.
So we can get those the way we want them to be when we make the transition over.
That's.
We should try to focus on that.
Best case scenario.
Yeah, and I agree. I think January 1 is the appropriate starting date because that starts your calendar.
Right here. Okay.
We also do prepare the financial statements as a matter of convenience. Government auditing standards really looks at that. They, they think every community, everyone who's subject to an audit should be able to prepare their own financial statements. And we just find typically with our clients, it's just not extremely practical. So what we expect is that the financial statements are reviewed, the journal entries are reviewed, you're reading the notes and making sure that those are, that the information that we've gathered is properly stated in the financial statement. Budgets, we, we noticed that there's not an annual budget for the debt service fund and some of the general fund accounts. So you may just want to go back and make sure that you're, you know.
I would like to say that those aren't required by the state, but it's just a good internal monitoring. So you have an idea of where you'll be at the end of the year if you decide to make any transfers between loans.
The special assessments, all the special assessments are recorded, as Paige mentioned, to A1 fund. But principal and interest payments are being made from each debt service fund. So that just needed to be allocated across all the debt service funds and Vance, I think you're already working on that.
You bet. Got a good handle on that right now.
So you state you're making, you would make a, an account for each debt service. So give example, I guess, like say Maple Lane, that's going to be a special assessment. It would have its own principal and interest account. And all the others would be the same way, but then I'm assuming we'd roll those all up to one for us reporting? I mean, I don't want to say minutia, but we would roll that up in a report to say this is our total debt servicing.
Yes, that, exactly.
Okay.
You, you would see it as one-line item unless you want to see the drill down version.
The details.
So if we had it up on a spreadsheet, you say you want to see details, we unhide those columns and boom, it's right around.
Yeah, group ungrouped. Yep, okay.
Yep.
And also there was a capital project fund that was being used, not in the correct way. It should have been in a debt service fund. So sort of ties in with that.
Okay.
And then at the time when we were doing the audit, we noticed that the Horace Park District loan repayment was a little delinquent. And so we just wanted to make sure we brought that to your attention because then it should be being assessed to see if it's collectible or it needs to be written off or some other terms, but just want to make sure that you're aware of that. We also issued some other, what we refer to as other matters. And again, this is a recommendation, certainly not required, you know, to consider budgeting for the water and sewer funds. Because that will give you an idea if you're tracking on what you expect based on your population and can evaluate any significant variances. That is not required though. There were some deficit fund balances and again, I think in part that's due to the software and in terms of how things are being recorded. But there, it is required that the financial statements include a paragraph on that, what is happening with those deficit funds. So I, we hope that that will all be cleaned up, especially moving to the new software.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's something that I've always, well, it wasn't set up originally for fund accounting. So I've just had to work around with the best I could, of course. But I think when we have the discussion a year from now with Black Mountain, things will look a lot different.
So that was actually one of my questions, Vance. I know we've talked about this quite a few times, but those accounts that have been sitting out there, that's, that's what you're talking about right now, right? Those accounts have been sitting out there that have had no transaction to them for a long time. Some have slid in a small balance, positive balance, some negative. But they've just been sitting on the books and we just need to dispose of them. So those accounts would speak, right? That's what you're talking about?
Yeah.
And, and so is that, will that happen now through this year-end process? Some of those accounts will get either adjusting entries or something to close those out or how?
I think we have, we've got the handle on that, right?
Yep, we've identified the funds that the projects are no longer occurring or that the bonds have been paid off. So there shouldn't be any.
Okay, so that, that will be a beautiful thing, right? To get those off, finally off your books, right? Because they've, they've just been hanging around for years in some cases.
Oh, absolutely. I've never been one to write anything off without.
But there have been no transactions in some of them for quite a while. So it's like, we're just carrying them around for.
Absolutely.
Creating more confusion than they are helping. So if this is the time to do that, that's, that's great. We're going to get through that. That's awesome.
Yeah. And from my standpoint, I, I know Paige's, Vance has reached out and Paige has been helping, provide some recommendations on what to do with that. So. And on a going-forward basis, with the new reporting, it should be easier to monitor that and then ask those questions. While I thought we were done with this project and perhaps it's still there. So.
And I, I think in a, you know, to summarize the whole thing, I, I will be working with Whitmer World, you know, and look forward to their guidance on how to move into this. Because that's what they do.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I agree.
The changes that we need to make, we need to do it the right way.
And, you know, one thing to keep in mind too, there's been a lot of changes, you know, going on here with different funds now required to be set up and monitored and everything. So this is a great time to get, to work towards getting that cleaned up with the transition to the new software. So.
You've been talking about some of these accounts for two years. Then you wouldn't want to get off the books.
Longer than that, actually.
One of the other things that we noted and it just hit because of timing. Though at one time you were required to review the pledge agreements for, you know, the funds in excess of FDIC. And, but that requirement was removed in the prior legislative period, but it sort of affected the 16 in terms of what we saw. So you don't have to worry about that anymore. So.
But we do have to do it annually.
I think it's recommended I do it annually.
Is it a requirement, did you say? Or?
I'd have to double check.
Okay.
Whether it is, I still think that's a positive thing. I think that's a good thing for us to get. Because we know then where our excess dollars are being kept and. We're not necessarily.
Is there still that $250,000 plus or minus? Is that, that's still correct, right?
Yep. So, but if, if you have like five accounts at Bell, for example, you have to get the entire balance by account. It's all the accounts being held with one institution.
Yes, okay.
So anything over that is required to have pledged securities. And it's based on the book balance, I'm sorry, the bank balance, not the book balance. So you could have some in-transit items. But we, even though it doesn't have to come forth to you twice a year, we still recommend that those pledged security reports are reviewed when they're received to make sure that the financial institution maybe hasn't reduced the securities. When I, I used to work in Arizona, they, one of the institutions actually reduced the pledged securities without getting approval. And it turned out to be a compliance issue because they just weren't aware of what was going on in the city. So I would hope that there's some communication if they want to make the change or something. But you should at least be reviewing that. So if, you know, just a couple of key takeaways, you know, you're, you're working on the fixed assets, which is an admirable major project, believe me, especially when you're talking about infrastructure in place. We want to make sure the audit entries get recorded, you know, as, as much as we can. And hopefully with the new system that will allow that, those entries, if there are any, are booked appropriately. Want to make sure special assessments are reported to the appropriate fund. With, with the training of, with the, the new software and even the fixed assets, it may be, you know, I would probably, one of the recommendations, it's more embedded with some of the findings, look at staff training, make sure that they're getting the right training, the other software. And as necessary, and some governmental CPE or training as well. And a lot of that is available through webcasts like to the GF.OA. And then you might just want to review your budgetary process and determine what is most interest to you in terms of monitoring and seeing those budget to actual reports. The final communication and auditors and accounts, we love communications. You know, there's too many to keep track of. But we do issue a communication to refer to as a communication to those charges of governance. Certainly you all meet that definition. So this is our letter to you to disclose anything that may not be appropriate in the audit or the internal communication letter. We do want to bring your attention that there was a new accounting policy adopted for the implementation of the fair value measurements. And that is primarily a disclosure issue within the financial statements. There are some significant estimates in your financial statements, which include the long-term liabilities as well as the fair value measurements. Once the capital assets are reported, that would be another significant estimate as you're evaluating the useful life, you know, on the depreciable assets. We had, we're pleased to say we have no difficulties with management or anyone we worked with. And we have provided schedules that have taken your unadjusted trial balance that, and shows our journal entries and how they flow into the report. And it provided the audit adjustments which we made in the financials or reflected in the financials. So that was the extent of my presentation. So we're certainly available for questions. And, but I would like to make sure I give thanks to Vance, Maita and Breton for their assistance in providing the information and all that.
Good information. Thank you.
I have a question. I'm assuming you do other cities similar to our size?
We do a governmental, yep.
Yep. Okay, so it's not, we're not that. My question is, you know, reading through the report and looking at deficiencies and those types of things, would you say we are on par with other cities or are we below other cities? Do we have some improvements we need to do? What, what would you give us as a, I'll say a grade or a recommendation or how well we did?
Well, I can provide you the audit opinion that, that talks about the financials. I think, you know, obviously looking at the internal reporting, so you're getting, you, you want to be able to take a look at your audited financial statements and it's similar to what you're used to seeing, especially at the fund level, on your internal financials. And so I think, you know, with the combination of Vance working on some of the items that we discussed as well as moving to a software that is going to provide better reports, I, I hope that will help. There shouldn't be surprises when by the time you get to an audit. We do feel the people that we were working with were knowledgeable about what was going on. Certainly the information was available. It's governmental accounting can be somewhat complex and that's why we suggested maybe some training. However, in regards to the size, that's probably very similar, you know, to other organizations and governmental's of this size. It's all hands on deck, so to speak. But also the fixed assets, you know, that's a tricky one because, you know, it can be very time-consuming to go back to capture all of that information in order to report it appropriately. So that's where you have to look at, is this adding value? But that would change the reflection of your financial statements if you have the fixed assets as well.
Okay.
But for certainly where you started, you know, it was very common not to report fixed assets for a smaller organization like this, so smaller municipality. It's hard for me to give a grade though, but.
Okay. Well, that's, no, that's, that's fine. I got an answer to one.
And with the fixed, the growth that the cities experienced over the last three years, it's kind of hard to measure where you were in 2014 compared to right now. So what's kind of maybe in 2019, 2020, if levels of, or potentially keep increasing with the school getting passed now? It's just always adapting and growing and making sure that you have the procedures in place or work to implement the new policies to make sure that everything's addressed before you're.
That's the concern is the complexity could potentially even get worse. So that's why getting things organized now is so critical, right? Because we've, this is the calm before the storm. So we have to be well-prepared, right? And that's where, this is such a critical step for us to make sure that we're positioned for the next big phase.
So I guess with that.
We, we, excuse me, we will be going through a yearly audit now too.
Right.
Won't be anymore two-year periods. So that should significantly help.
So it'll actually reduce the overall effort each year then?
We hope so.
Because the financial statements and so forth will be more organized. So you'll be able to produce a lot of the needed documents that you need and the reports and so forth. So overall, the effort should be less. At least that's the goal, right? So that would be the other recommendation is whatever, if there are other things that we should be doing to prepare for that, either, you know, infrastructure process, tools, training, whatever it is, reduce that overall effort.
Yeah, we will keep that in mind. One of the. Uh, one of the things that I sort of look at as a baseline is what kind of adjustments are necessary for the audit? And I'm going to throw out the Gatsby adjustments because those aren't really, you know, that's for the government line. But, you know, looking at those HAEs at effective funds. So next year, if it's, um, you know, this year it was up to fourteen, sometimes we grow sub-entries, you know. But it's a matter of what do those entries reflect and what is the overall net effect? That's a baseline that you can use to see where the where the improvement is. And I I know too Vance has been proactive in trying to get some things adjusted in eighteen as well and set up, so. But yes, you, that is certainly a concern with the growth and that's why providing education to those involved in the accounting function. And, um, you know, at some point, based on the needs and responsibilities, is it necessary to add more staff for dealing with that to make sure the point is being done timely? And that's not just at year end, but also monthly as well.
So Katie's going to come work for us full-time, is that what you're saying? She laughs, some nervous laugh.
She always allows, yeah. But yeah, so you, and I think it's good though that you're aware of that because those are the type of questions that you should be, you know, asking of Brenton and Vance, you know, in your 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 regular calls. And asking how are you dealing with the new school or type of things, so.
Anybody got any other questions here?
I don't have any questions, I guess. Can we reference now when we're talking about the audit itself? I don't, unless there's other question.
Oh, I can leave some business cards on the front desk too, if you guys have any questions. Maybe not this week, but after that.
You may not prepare for that on Friday?
I will, I will.
Okay, fair enough.
I guess I just wanted to state that I understand that, yeah, thank you for your presentation. Very helpful. Appreciate it. I want to thank the staff for all the work they did. I know it's a tough thing, our business. It's very, it's year-long thing to go through audits and I'm going through an IT audit right now at work. Um, but I noticed that based on our material deficiencies or other things that we stated that Black Mountain was going to be the key to this. And I just want to state that that is not the only thing that's going to solve this. There is no silver bullet with a software system. Just as you stayed advanced, there's a number of setups that weren't done in Great Plains, that kind of stuff to solve what you were dealing with. There's no guarantee we're going to get those done in Black Mountain. So I would like to make sure we have a plan that we adjust, reset, refine our financial statements the way we need we need by January one so that we can make this transition a lot easier. So if we have to restructure our financials or add accounts or do anything like that, we get that done. So then in January one, we can start tracking. Second piece would be procedures that we have for accounting for all of this, which I'm assuming they're recommending for us to do and those types of things are in place as well so that we can start tracking properly, which will make our transition easier. And that to me is going to be the critical things to make sure that this is successful. And the other thing is not to, you know, since it is my job and I do this on a large scale, not to push it. We, it's going to be a lot of work to get to this by April one, a significant amount of work for all of us included. So and I know I have said that Brian and I and Brent and Vance would need to try and discuss a plan and that kind of stuff. So we're here to help, but it's going to be a significant amount of work. And I know that there are a number of deficiencies that were on here multiple times, meaning multiple years. I I really don't want to see those again as my other things, so we need to address this and get it taken care of. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Do we need to be prepared for, and no knock against our staff at all, but for additional outside help on any of this or?
I think we'll have a discussion and it sounds like Vance is working with them to try and, you know, hopefully get better financials. And I know we've had discussions with Brent, but yeah, there might be. But I'd like the information of the additional training. If there's additional training we need to do, let's think about that.
You talked to Dave, uh, it'd be after we assess what we really want, what what we really need additional help with. Then we may come back and say, okay, we really see a benefit of pulling in this expertise for this other one. So we may be bringing that forward, uh, just seeing what guerrilla we're taking on. You know, what's the, how how big is the transition to getting things set up for Black Mountain apparently? So we're looking at a couple of different avenues, so.
Well, we've done well bringing in extra consultants or help when needed. Let's not.
Yeah, we're not going to shy away.
No.
Make sure that we do it right.
It's all, it's all for the good.
Yeah.
It's not a knock on anybody. It's making sure there's a lot of things have changed and.
And that should be able to expand as the growth continues to with whatever is set up, so.
No, absolutely.
All right, anybody got any other? Otherwise, uh, thank you for coming out and presenting for us to see. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to the next. Jim, you want the transportation grant?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council. I don't know how you expect me to follow that presentation.
Try, man, try.
From accounting to engineering. Two thumbs up yesterday. All right, so the first thing we have on the agenda is the Transportation Alternative Grant application. I've been working on this with Councilwoman Johnson. She's been working on getting support letters and I've been updating the application. Thankfully, it is very, very similar to last year, so it's been a matter of tweaking a couple of things here and a couple of things there. They make some changes just to make sure you read the application again, so I did that. I do have a map up there just showing you the.
I was going to say which, which extension?
Uh, try it.
As we're going.
Nope.
It's project location.
There you go. That sounds better.
Which one?
Can I make a recommendation? I know we've kind of talked about this, but all of these documents that are going in this starting next meeting, can we have them tagged with the number that they relate to so that make it easier for Brian and everyone?
We do have, we did get the software now, Adobe, uh, the Adobe Pro Professional setup, so we should be able to be doing that.
And even the name, I mean, just even the file names would be ordered then to make it easy for Brian to find, so.
So at the last council meeting, we decided, the council decided to extend the line from the proposed, I shouldn't say the proposed, the first phase that it starts at the school and goes north to seventy-first Avenue there. And, uh, we would start there and continue, or, uh, is that eighty-first, eighty-first, I'm sorry. And continue north to seventy-sixth Avenue. So that is a project that we are preparing and that's a project we are putting putting in for. Applications due to MetroCog by December third. I know Chelsea's been working with, working on getting support letters and that's pretty much all we really need. I looked through the numbers on our last estimate and they were, uh, very good numbers with the bidding environment that we're seeing so far, so no real change there, just a little bit. I up some culvert prices just to make sure that we had enough in there for the culvert too, so.
So the shared use path we have or the grant we have so far covers from east first south, right?
Correct. And I checked on that today and I will read you these emails because they're kind of fun. So I reached out to the, I forget what the guy's name is, Kevin Stankowitz with the North Dakota Park and Rec. And he is the one who we've been in contact with about the status of grants. And when last I talked to him, he had said that he would keep us in touch. So I sent him an email today asking for an update and the response I got back was, "I am no longer with the North Dakota Park and Rec Department. It's been my pleasure working with recreational professionals, grant project sponsors, bikeway, community leaders and state federal partners. For assistance, please contact Matt Gardner." So I contacted Matt Gardner, got a response back. Matt Gardner's no longer with the North Dakota Park and Recs either. And they gave me three more people's names. So a bulk of it is, we will look into this and get back to you. That's what I got out of them, so.
It's gone nowhere.
Sure fell off, so once I hear something back from them, I will let you know. So I thought that was kind of interesting when I reached out to one person, got told to go to another person, then they were gone, so. Not sure if it's retirements, buyouts or what, but. So so anyways, when I hear more about that, I will let you know and we can, we can go from there. But we had the money, we just needed to be obligated by the FHWA. Kevin never got back to us. I know he was going to keep me in the loop and and Vance, so.
This was a submission that was due this fall?
Oh, which one was that?
Well, this, this.
The red line?
Yes.
The red line is due December sit third to MetroCog for construction in twenty twenty.
Okay, right.
So.
Yeah, you were wrong when we talked about it, but when I talked to Jim originally, I was really wanting to do something with wall. But since wall is kind of up in the air as far as repair for other reasons, we elected to just continue this one. And it links onto the one that the area gave us, so it's very.
There are going to be pedestrian facilities on the roundabout. They're being constructed with it, so the crossing.
So this would tie into the roundabout.
Correct, yeah. And if this is, this would be done in twenty twenty, the roundabout's constructed for, scheduled for twenty nineteen construction, so.
As long as the design is.
It would have something, something, something to tie into. And then there is potential for putting a bike path along seventy-sixth from seventeen to the school.
This way?
Correct.
Cause it would, yeah, okay.
And there's potential to go to the, go to the west too if need be, but.
Well, since we're going to have to reconsider seventy-sixth anyway, the bike path would be included in that project.
Probably be an alternate, just the way I'm looking at it. It it certainly will be looked at. It's seventy-sixth is still in preliminary design with the county doing that, so. Um, if it's something that the council wants to go for, certainly can be included.
We're going to have to pay for a portion of that anyway, so.
You gotta pay for most of it. On seventy-sixth, that is.
I didn't hear you say.
Portion?
I didn't hear you say all.
Well.
Okay, sorry.
So so the grant is a twenty percent match.
Right.
With the, and then the engineering isn't covered. But the seventy-sixth stuff, there's quite a bit that you, the city will be on the hook for, if not all of it, so.
There's other grants.
There are, and this would be, this would be a candidate for TA grant again, or a.
Even get a portion of it?
Yep, yep.
I agree.
Yep, I agree.
Remember, Matt Lauer's going to be on board, so.
Yeah, we're good. We'll use a name recognition.
Oh, man, he's just going to hate us.
Oh, yeah. He's going to show up the first day and.
You think he hasn't been hearing this?
I know.
I know.
I know, I know, but it's funny.
Really? Okay, so that's that, just a, just kind of a discussion item. Uh, the second I have is a request for an extension on the seal code on Northwood-Southwood project. As you may recall, Aztec was the subcontractor doing the work on the Maple Grove project when the weather turned on them and they weren't able to get it complete. Uh, the same thing happened to Border States. They were using Aztec as their, as their subcontractor performing that work. They're going to do them at the same time. Weather didn't allow it. Project is is operational, it's functional. This would be, uh, he didn't put a date on here, but I told him we would at least present it for consideration. Um, we did give until, I think it was June, uh, middle of June for the other project just to let the temperature get warm enough for the seal code to be.
He didn't specify or.
No, he didn't. Now that I see that, so.
A little surprised, so.
Yeah.
Question is.
I suppose it's got to hit a certain temperature though.
It does. It has to be seventy degrees, so it all depends. If you get an early summer, you get a late summer, or you know.
Yeah.
A warm, a warm spring, fall, spring.
Issue at hand, so I'm going to speak for John here. Are we going to get damage to this?
On the.
Cause it's not sealed.
No, no, it's not un, it's not untypical to seal code it a year later or so. And that's.
Water, I'm just worried about water.
No.
Moisture getting in there and breaking it up?
No.
Okay.
No.
A lot of places will come back until a couple of years after, even.
We've found in the past that if we don't include it in the original project, it gets forgotten or it never gets done in the maintenance cycle. So we've been including them in the, in the projects to make sure that that extra gets done, so.
So Jim, I can't, I can't help myself.
Yes.
The way I look at this is Northwood and Southwood and Maple Grove, they were trying to do them all at the same time.
Aztec was correct.
So they get better, they can work their project together and turn away and probably get the best deal.
Sole contractor convenience?
Yes, exactly.
Yep.
And I get to ran into some difficulties that I agree with, I don't always agree with at Maple Grove. Northwood and Southwood was a simple project.
I agree.
There's no reason why that shouldn't have gotten done. So if they want an extension, what's in it for us? Bottom line. I I I think this is just, it's kind of a BS deal.
Sure.
Well, we're, we should, are we holding their retainage?
Yes, we do have retainage on them. We, we haven't, it hasn't been paid. Yeah, and we will hold that until.
And they aren't getting paid, so.
And we aren't going to do it tomorrow, I'll tell you that much.
Being in the business, I I get all that dynamics, but you still have delivery dates. If it doesn't work, you better pay attention to your dates.
I agree.
You've got to hold people accountable to it.
Well, if that's the case, then you would have to file a claim against them. And then the, whatever the contract is, it probably says that there's a thousand dollars a day for missing the substantial completion date. But the issue is, if you're going to force them to that, hold, hold them to the fire, are you going to get, what kind of quality are you going to get from this project? It it's just, it won't, it won't work. You, they can't go out there and do it.
Well, I, I think they've burned their bridge of doing work in town too, to a point. I mean, that's the other part to. They got to be aware of that.
That's something you'll figure out the next time.
I think when it comes mid-time, we have to pay attention to some of that. I'm not trying to be a complete ass about it.
No, this is a different prime contractor than the Maple one.
Yeah.
It's just the same sub. They have, they are multiple, so.
Right.
One thing I do want to stress, and I understand your frustration, is if we do kind of crack down on contractors, what will happen, at least what I've seen, uh, previous experiences has been, uh, you'll get higher prices, higher bids. Because contractors will put that as a, being cautious of dealing with the city, so.
Well, because we're going to be accountable to them.
Yep.
Wow, that that's.
I'm, I'm just saying.
That's bull.
I'm just saying that what I have seen, experiences of, I know it's frustrating to hear, but if we were to have occurrences like that happen over and over, they may start doing that. Not saying they would up here or not.
It's wrong for us to request decent pricing with a schedule that they set. We're trying to hold them to the schedule they set.
It's something we stress.
Whatever.
It it's something we stress. I'm just saying that it's something I've seen before, so it's just something we have to keep in mind, so.
There are no increase, there is nothing, I mean, so let's say they come back next year and oil prices are up or whatever, that kind of stuff. We're not, we're not accepting any change or costs or anything like that.
I agree. You're doing it, you're doing it at the, at your bid price.
Okay.
Yours don't change in time.
Yep.
Right, and that's as long as we're all on the same opinion that they come back and go, oh, my cost has gone up. That's, when you have the listing of all the days they could have worked and things like that.
Well, that's with the Maple one, but I, I agree, yeah. This is, this is Northwood-Southwood.
No, I will say, I think there's got to be a better, um, some sort of spreadsheet or something that we track. And I'm not trying to blame you, Jim, at all, but I think maybe there's got to be notice out there to these contractors that, hey, get it done. I mean, don't, don't come in late.
I think what you're going to have to do then is just start putting claims against these contractors. That's, that's why they're, why it's there. If you don't meet that substantial completion date, thousand dollars a day.
I think it also, um, timing is everything. So if we know that these projects are coming down the pipe, we want to start them earlier in the year so that they don't get pushed out and this wouldn't be an issue.
Right.
And that one was.
Yeah, that one. They delayed it.
They, they delayed it. They, they played it up with Maplewood, Maple Grove, a hundred percent, not a doubt in my mind.
So then it would, then it would kind of fall on like lesson learned, we're not going to work with these guys if that's how they're going to make it.
You, you know what? Some of the best people I work for are the strictest ones because you know exactly where you stand. And it, it just works smoother. You know, honestly, if that made sense to you, it just, the hard-nosed attitude isn't such a negative. You know exactly where you stand at all, all the time. You know what you have to do and you know you're going to get paid at the end of the day. It's not that complicated to do business, folks. Can we table this and have, let you guys do a little work on what can be done? Cause I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to prove anything, right? Well, I know you guys could without me, but, um, I think it deserves a little more conversation, maybe some, uh, discussion on what we can do.
But like with the set, what can we do?
Counter with an offer of a discount for it. You know, we don't, we don't want to be hard-nosed, but you guys blew your time.
Do you think that would be more so, once they get it done, say here we're not giving you the full amount if you want to pay that way?
Okay, I may be getting in trouble for saying this too, but so the assess, this is an assessment, right?
Yeah, well, these are, right.
When does the assessment go out to the people? And when does that start?
Next year, right?
Yeah, well, this one hasn't been assessed yet.
Okay, when do they start paying?
It'll be in our next tax.
The year after.
Next year.
Year after. So it's two year, roughly two years out, is it, roughly?
No, won't it, won't it be, this one you'll have put on the books soon enough, it'll show up on the taxes we get in December of two thousand and nineteen.
Yes.
So they will pay and.
We'll start paying right then and.
So when they get their bill in.
Two thousand and nineteen, these assessments.
So you're getting assessed for a job that's not complete.
No.
No.
Not till after.
Maybe assessed next year, a year from this.
So it won't be till next, when we get our tax bills next year.
But they've already gone through the detour and all that during the chip seal and all that, and now they're gonna go through it again.
It, it's a, it's a day's worth of work, it, it's not a big inconvenience, it really isn't, but.
A day's worth of work that they couldn't fit in, wow.
It's, yeah, I, I will make excuses for them, it just, I mean, the bulk of it is.
Gotta be a price to pay on this one.
Ask for options, Jim and I and Lucas, we could touch base.
Yep. Yeah, it's not gonna get done tomorrow, so you don't have to.
It's not like they're gonna be out there tomorrow, it's gonna be at least a few months.
All right, let's table this and get on with the thing here, we could just, you guys can come up with.
Table.
If you got some ideas on that, that's fine, we'll table it for later, okay, let's move on to eleven.
Jim, this is yours.
Yeah, I know, I'm just trying to catch up on my notes here. Uh, as you are all aware, there is street projects around a new school, if you didn't know, there's a new high school, middle school being built.
Thank you for the four one one.
So in case anyone wasn't aware. Yeah, so there's been a couple of discussions, apparently a bond referendum was passed, so it's going ahead, so. As part of that project, Lakeview Drive has been identified as a necessity, the district has been creative, it is in protest period right now for the improvements. Uh, the one thing that comes with that is an agreement for engineering services, this is so we could start working, or not working, but this is our agreement. Work on that project, and we will work on the phases of this project as directed by the council, so right now we're working on the preliminary engineering report. Once the insufficient or sufficient protests have been received by the city at your next meeting, we'll either be directed to go ahead with compliance and specs. Or we will not, depending upon how that protest comes in, so with that, I just. Lucas has looked at it, Lucas has made his revisions on it, apparently he wants to look at it again.
Well, that's not the.
What?
You might have the original, that's not the rise line.
What?
Yeah, but that's not the same as that one.
Uh, is there a word document up there, Brian?
Yeah, the word, there's a word document up there.
Go to the word doc, that's the one that Lucas.
So we should get rid of the other document?
Yes, pull that one apart.
So this is street improvement.
So the word doc is the one that Lucas did?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, the word doc is the one that, yep.
And you're, you're good with it, Lucas?
Yep.
Gotta be done. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for engineering services.
Okay, John makes a motion, second by, uh, Brian.
Real quick, what's, do you have a rough estimate of the cost?
I do, it's on the second to last page.
Thank you.
I think it's actually the third to last page, if I'm not mistaken.
This is just a schedule.
Summary of estimated costs, and these are project costs, they were going to this improvement district, not in the general.
Yeah, I think it's done for free anymore, does it?
Obviously.
So you're saying, so you're saying the whole thing in the end is not to exceed the hundred and twenty-three? Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, anything else, otherwise I'm gonna ask for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
Do we have to roll call this, cause we're spending money?
It's really shitty. Okay, all right, roll call it, John.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Chelsea.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
All right, there we go.
With that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, uh, on to twelve, Brent, you're up.
I'm, I'm not gonna be as exciting as Jim on this one practically, but, uh, this is more just to give council an update of. One item that we're working on is a. No, no, this is a discussion, uh, one thing we're working on is developing a snow removal and ice control policy. Uh, what we are modeling after is the city of Wapton, the city of Wapton has a very thorough, uh, snow removal policy and ice control saying. In these different conditions, this is what you can expect, what is nice about it is that you have a complaint from anybody, you could fall upon it saying, hey. Here's the expectations that we're, we're holding our staff to, the city to, so if we have, you know, certain amount of snowfall. Or different types of conditions, this is when the different activities are gonna occur. Um, it does allow latitude to where we could go above and beyond, it's just saying the minimum expectations. Right now it's more of an informal, you know, verbal policy, how, what we follow, and the general guideline is about two inches of snow. That's when the crews would start going out, where this would say, okay, we would pay attention to intersections a little bit, if they're slick, we're gonna go out. Uh, we have just started using sand into our mixture for salt sand, instead of just doing straight salt. Intersections and throughout the street, all our streets, um, the first snowstorm wasn't the strongest response on that. But the last couple, I hope you've seen a little bit of a difference with at least seeing some of the sand out there, helps improve visibility of showing public. We are out there, our crews are out there doing something, uh, but like I said, this will help identify what streets will hit. And what parameters, when we be out, hitting blades down, things like that.
And they're gonna prioritize the intersections that frequently get complaints.
But one element within this policy would identify, uh, different levels, so it'd say, okay, we're going to hit intersection. Be certain intersections or be certain roads first, then when we're comfortable with these, then we're gonna go to the secondary road. So you have like a primary road network and then a secondary road network, that way you get the main streets going into town. Uh, also identifying if there's certain agreements or who has ownership of certain roads, because we'll get complaints sometimes about. Uh, like County Road seventeen, we'll get the complaint even though it's County Road. Now, should we be tackling that, well, the policy will outline if it's bad condition, are we going to hit it or not? Same thing with some other streets, uh, Hundredth Avenue, for example, that's County Road also, but in the state limit, should we hit? Should we be putting salt sand down, putting blade down, things like that, so, uh, but that's where we, the council would have a formal stance. Saying here's where we think is acceptable.
So the other side of this, does it also have the policies around pulling the plows when the plow would not go out? So that if people get stuck and it's like, okay, that's because of snowfall, whatever conditions are not safe for the plow drivers. Right?
It is.
At some point you need to say, all right, we're fighting, losing battle here, right, and so is there, is that element of this?
Uh, it can be, it's typically, all you're doing is establishing the minimum criteria, it's not the, uh, here's when we, it's not safe.
Because if it's, also if it's snowing at such a level or blizzard conditions.
There, there is.
If, if, there's a better chance that they're gonna hit somebody because of low visibility or something, then they're actually clearing the road.
There is the ability for the mayor, uh, the mayor and my position also to be able to call a snow emergency. So we set, declare, and depending on how you'd wanna have in the policy, but declaring saying there's a snow emergency and here's when it's not safe. Things like that, so.
It could also be the closing roads, right, but I, I don't know, if we have no travel advised. How do we, how do we, I mean, we have a notification method now, right, but if we say, all right, we're pulling the plows, no travel in the city. Right, except for emergency vehicles, so that, I mean, we, that, I would hope that that's a part of this policy.
That's a part of the policy, it also tells you who we would reach out to if there, you know, it was declared as no emergency or. Unsafe to travel, those different things, the policy even states who, who we would reach out to, like what news media contacts, things like that. So it's pretty thorough, the other thing it does too is, let's say, like a mailbox is it, it outlines the process. Flat out saying, here's what we're gonna follow if a mailbox is hit, within a certain amount of time, we're gonna have either a temporary one set up or. Work with the post office to get a P O box set up temporarily or something, until a permanent solution can be fixed. It also identifies a certain time for if, you know, in the springtime we'll have where some people's sprinkler heads may be hit by a snow. Plow blade going up on curb a little bit, and they were under sprinkler system right next to the edge of the side or curb. They'll say, okay, you have a certain timeframe to claim that if you don't, say you try to come to the city in. July or August, saying that a snowfall hit your sprinkler system, well. Too late, so it's gonna say, okay, a certain date, here's a cutoff, so that way you should be able to. File a claim with the city if there was a plow blade that hit sprinkler system or things like that.
Why the city of Wapton?
Yeah, just an example, what we found, and it's very thorough, so, it's about twelve-page document that was very thorough. And trying to find one is off a say that not much bigger than us, so.
Is there somebody you can ask down there, or what's worked and what hasn't worked with?
I've actually spoke with the city engineer that they've had, and I can reach out to their public works director too, uh, Jim.
You guys got good contacts down there?
Yeah, they're good contacts, apparently there's an office right across the street from their say all, so.
Well, it'd be easy for us to adopt changes that they've kinda wanted to do at the same time.
A lot of work was put into that policy, I remember when it was written.
Yeah.
And, um, it's a real encompassing one, I, the one that the city engineer, public works director who wrote it was very thorough. And that was one thing that he was very good at, it's one of the things that came up there when he first started working was the snow and ice removal policy. So he wrote that policy, and I, I think it's.
Have a one-page summary of that as well, if you could post on the website and publish when the horse happens and so forth.
Right.
Just for public awareness.
Yep, and my experience also working with snow routes, uh, that is, uh, that could be a lengthy process doing that. So that's why it was best to follow something that's already existing, that is pretty thorough and outlining all these, so.
And obviously Vance has been here a couple of years for complaints. Also, I'm sure he's got a few stories, but between him and.
He loves to pass them off to me now.
Well, I mean, you can kinda take those into account.
Well, that's our biggest, our biggest area of complaints, I know, so.
Yeah.
But staying ahead of time, we know that the areas are in the priority of the different, uh, just setting expectations will help, right? Reducing some of the phone calls, right, that would be the goal, how, how can we reduce the phone call by just setting an expectation right time?
Yeah.
Maybe that will help.
And that's what, that's what we're trying to do, so people know that's what we're gonna do, now we go above and beyond, but here's the memo.
Right.
Anything else on that?
So, no rocks in the back of the sand?
No, no more, no more river. We found this, we found this not very effective.
All right, moving along. All right, Brian, you got some general updates you wanna run over?
Um, just a couple items, as we've heard with, uh, Matt's name being brought up a few times. Uh, Matt Lauer, not the news anchor, former, uh, has accepted community development director position. We're excited to welcome him on board, uh, the start date that we had set up with Matt is January seventh. However, we may be able to coordinate with him to come for a few days here in December, just before Christmas. January seventh, yep, uh, but anyways, if he is able to make it here before Christmas for a few days. I'll let council know, maybe he'll be able to attend the council meeting or something like that, to where, uh, everybody will get to see him again and welcome him aboard. Uh, we're excited to have him on board, uh, looking forward to when January seventh comes around.
And where's he moving from?
Spokane, Washington area, so he's moving, he has a pretty long move, uh, and that's why, let that with the start dates, that's why, or, uh, holidays. So he'll come January seventh, gives him roughly a little over a month to.
He'll be getting some heavier jackets than he was used to.
And, uh, he has a significant other that is coming that is in the H R medical area, so he did award resume, his resume and that, so. So we can see if we can.
Yep.
Assist in providing.
Um, couple other things, uh, just a, just a reminder, legislative session's coming up, I'm trying to coordinate a. Meeting where some of our area elected officials, legislators can attend the state council meeting. To come hear some of the council's concerns, any residents are welcome to come and express their concerns too, that are. That may come up for the upcoming legislative session, there's a few items that have been talked about with league of the cities. Uh, as you've probably heard, the furry dog bill, that's the infrastructure grant, or, uh, infrastructure program that would give the city a horse roughly. A million dollars every biennium, so every other year, uh, that would be very helpful for the city, and as we get more in population. If we exceed the five thousand population threshold, we would be in the top tier, which would give us. A base, uh, dollar amount of two and a half million instead of half million, so that would help tremendously for our infrastructure projects. Which we do not have a shortage of.
Isn't, isn't it lower than five thousand? It is, it is five thousand for the.
I've heard this spiel about half a dozen times now, it's five thousand is the base threshold for the top tier. Unless legislators change it, if they change it, which you never know what could happen, uh, if you're able to push for that, that's awesome. Um, but it'll give us, currently we're set for a million, the base is a half million, our growth, growth qualifiers. Put us up there quite a bit too, so if we're in that next tier, our growth will help with that.
What do you plan to have them in here?
Uh, we're going to try to get some here December third, so the next city council meeting, I spoke with one today. And she is unable to make it for December third, uh, however, I did express to some of the concerns, like the furry dog bill to her. And just saying special assessments, we've heard are a very touchy topic right now, and that is a concern to the city council too. I didn't get in depth on special assessments with them though, um, but I'll reach out to those other legislators and see if we can at least get the other ones to come.
Cause we're going out to Bismarck on December fifth, and we probably wanna meet with a few of them as well, so.
Yep, um, let's see, also just a heads up, we'll be discussing quite a few different special assessment districts likely. At the next council meeting related to the school infrastructure area, so Seventy-sixth Street Roundabout and that Seventy-sixth Avenue. Um, and then we may have a few others tied to the school district too, such as like some changes with Lakeview Drive. Or Sixty-third Street, Eighty-first Street, your avenue, those different ones, maybe a discussion coming up. Uh, it would be a lot easier if we have this one area where we're knocking out special assessment discussion all at one time, so just giving you a heads up about that. And then Cory will talk more about Main Street, but, uh, the one number one point out is we had very good attendance today, forty-seven people. So that's pretty good attendance for a city R size, uh, or Main Street listening session, so that's all I had.
Okay.
All right, so John, you still have no report?
I don't think so.
Gotcha. Dave?
No.
Okay, Chelsea?
No.
Brian?
No, I'm not, nothing to talk about this time.
Okay, so there's a couple of things on the plate here that I had, um, had a couple of people from the diversion already come. Chat with us last Thursday, um, just gonna keep having ongoing discussions, they are fruitful, but we gotta still keep talking. So we're gonna try and get together with them, when was it again, Brent, we're gonna have another follow-up here, second week in December is what we're shooting for.
Yeah.
Um, I'll keep you guys posted on that, but let's, we're just having conversations right now, we're gonna keep them going. So far they've all been good, and let's just, we're gonna keep moving forward with that, um, Main Street listening session, we had that this afternoon, we had about twenty. Members on the panel, just a select group of people from around the metro, the horse metro. Um, so, and we had four kids from the high school that were there, four seniors, and that was really good because you get to hear their perspective on this too. Um, there were a couple of people from the governor's office came, gave a presentation, or helped facilitate the presentation. Conversation that went on with that, um, and there was a couple of other members from the state in different capacities that were there to listen as well. So, um, it was all good, it was an extension basically of our envisioned horse meetings, but this took it up a notch. Um, having some other different conversation, but it was good, a lot of interaction, um, like I said, we had a lot of different backgrounds. So that was, was good, had different conversations that took place, themes are the same, so that's good, there's nothing really changed, everybody. Even the new people who hadn't been in our envisioned horse meetings, same comments about what they liked about the town, what they wanna do, how they wanna see. Even the new people who hadn't been in our envisioned Horace meetings, same comments about what they liked about the town, what they wanna do, how they wanna see the town. In ten, fifteen, a hundred years. So, we're gonna have probably another follow-up discussion on that, it'll probably be in January. But that's to be determined, but that's what the plan is, tentatively, is to try and put together something in January, so stay tuned for that. That's all I've got.
Feedback from, I mean, one data point from the state mainstream initiative folks that, you know, she's done like sixty-four. Of these kinda listening sessions with different communities, and overwhelmingly, she said, yeah, we've got something really special here going on, and. This is probably one of the most exciting, you know, listening sessions.
Unique.
Unique was the phrase that got used.
I, I think, you know, we've got a, we've got a really great opportunity here, and I, I was just impressed with the. Level of engagement that everyone had and the interest that everyone showed, so I, we gotta keep the momentum going.
Yep, I agree with you.
It's really, really cool, especially the school's gonna help facilitate some of that.
Yeah, but then Brandy, uh, pile two was there, and she made a comment to the group too, that they had one of these in Castleton. And did not have the type of engagement that we had here with the, just the conversation and everything like that. And the amount of people that showed up for this thing, so, it generates some excitement in town, that's good, that's what we need to do, and we'll just keep moving this thing forward. Just nice to hearing those feedbacks that you get.
Was it invited her to move to Horace? She, she could, yeah, she told her to move to Horace. Yeah, Darren Goldie did, yeah, that's right, her, asked her to move to Horace, it's still in her district, so.
Yeah, no problem.
So exciting here, but not in Castleton.
He was kinda funny for a farm, no? No, she won't move.
Would this be something that we should have, like Joel Paulson from Stan Tech attend?
It'll be Comp Plan.
That'll, that'll come, yeah, that, that'll be part of the Comp Plan, that's what this next meeting will be, that's why I was thinking it's probably in January. We'll try and dovetail these events.
Yeah, and we currently, we're, we don't have Stan Tech under contract yet for the Comp Plan, so. Actually, I'll be meeting with Metro.
He's still, he's still coming.
Yeah, they probably would, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For this?
Yeah.
Yes.
In the future, is there any way you can get a little publicity out of this, I mean, should we think about inviting?
We did, actually, we did do a press release and they didn't.
Okay.
We, I didn't see anything including it, but.
Just keep, let's just keep trying, right, and keep trying, because at some point, we're gonna get more notice.
I'll work on that, if, if we got a little bit more time, and unfortunately I didn't have as much as I'd like to. But if we get something ahead, a little bit more ahead of time, we can get some radio play with this too.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe call whistleblowers and go the other way.
Yeah, right. Reverse whistleblower, but I mean, we could try something different, I could, we could get on the air.
With the short timing that we did have for this, I mean, it was less than a two-week turnaround, uh, we had, we had a very good turnaround.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, we, we did hold of everybody too.
Yeah.
I'll get first, I'll get you a second, go.
I was talking with, uh, at the last Metro meeting, there was a representative there from our local railroad. Who was asking if he wanted to hear, heard something was gonna go on at Metro Call concerning Horace. And, you know, wanted to know if there was any future for the railroad, you know, like, maybe instead of coming in and bending. Coming straight down, uh, along the highway.
Yeah, I know, we've heard rumors of that too.
I said, I said, well, chances of getting a bridge over, uh, over the highway or over the diversion aren't too good, I don't think, but. Uh, you know, they, they may well be scared for damages if they don't get the bridge.
Yeah, that conversation got brought up last week, I was surprised as well, but it's cer, it seems like it's on the table.
I told him that I, I thought a railroad bridge along the one hundred would, uh, railroads along one hundred would really be useful.
Mm-hmm, that's why that conversation got brought up, so, yeah, so you heard something, I've heard something, so it's not dead air. To keep an eye on that and just see how serious they are about that. So.
Especially if that is gonna become a light industrial corridor, that, cause that, it's fascinating, because. That was the two criteria that Holly asked them to, the mainstream initiative said, number one, do you have natural gas supply to your city? Number two, do you have railroad access, if you have those two things, you're on the map, cause that's what the light industrial want.
Yeah, there's no future, I just wanted to make sure that, because.
I heard it through the back channels, and that's.
That's a huge, that'd be a huge issue for her.
Yep. It's just, it just changes the flavor of things a little bit more, definitely.
Yeah. We just don't, don't continue with the Fargo, I'm sorry, I didn't say that.
That's be a true spur.
Oh, I was just gonna mention that, that the meeting, the Main Street meeting, it's in a forum on Saturday.
Oh, was it, okay.
Yeah, I was at the only fact, in fact, I was gonna say, couldn't we do more than that? But, uh, yeah, it was a little piece that I told him about.
No, if we do it again, we'll try and make a bigger, bigger splash with it, like I said, two-week turnaround, we just had to try and get participants, that was our biggest thing.
So, you guys sent in a press release?
Yeah, we sent a press.
That's, we're at the whim of what, where they put it, that's the unfortunate part about it, right? It's trying to get on the map with the forums.
And they put in what they want to be continued, nation, person, day.
Right, right now.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll get this handled a little bit better in January.
Yeah.
So we'll have a little bit more lead time, I do hope, so, all right, with that. Yep, second, John, Dave, all in favor, say aye. Meeting's adjourned, thank you.